And I have a recommended motion to approve the revised October fourteenth, twenty twenty five Board of Education meeting agenda as presented.
I'll make the recommendation.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Host? Motion passed.
Yes, everyone join me in a moment of silence for some lost staff members over the past year. Please join me in a moment of silence for recognizing like then Mariucci, Barbara Davenport, and David. Next, any agendas of the office for our new student board members?
You want to open first?
Yeah, sure.
Here's your writing, and you can read your.
Alright. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the New York, of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Student Board Member according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Student Board Member according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. That's that. Nicholson?
Nicholson.
Just sign.
Thank you, thank you Madison Zach for being elected and serving as a student board member this year. Look forward to working with you. Next on the agenda is again a spotlight. We have Ms. Benosco, Principal of Coniston Elementary School to recognize some commanders.
So while they're getting that ready, I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. We're recognizing tonight, and everyone here is so deserving. We also have so many staff members and students back in our building that could also and can't wait to talk about those who are here. So at Coniston Elementary School, our North Star, the thing that we believe in most early is that we want to engage learners by identifying their interest in learning styles. We want to promote universal design for learning as a mindset that we all believe in to engage students and challenge them to develop a strong foundation. We want to be flexible, want to incorporate choice as much as possible, and we want students in our classrooms to develop personal responsibility so that they have agency over their whole learning. And our goal is for staff and students to use data, universal design, culturally responsive tier one instructional practices for continuous improvement of student performance and being right feedback. And there's one of our staff members we're going to be recognizing tonight is so teamwork makes the dream work. That's kind of our theme for tonight. I have a couple of instructional teams that I want to talk about because of the work that they do. Another theme tonight is quiet leadership, and the folks that we're recognizing tonight really demonstrate that quiet leadership style where they come in every day with a positive attitude, a positive mindset, no matter what else is going on around them, and really come in to do their very best every day. I'd like to start with Allison Fisher and Jen Manelli. Really, over the last, I would say, they can correct me if I'm wrong, but I would say over my last four or five years have really been leaders in developing growth mindset with their students and really making that a culture in their classroom. They really represent that well, and when we do classroom visits, let's not get an opportunity to do those visits. I hope they'll choose to go see Mrs. Fisher and Mrs. Manelli. So I'd like to start with. So kind of going along with that group mindset theme, I also want to recognize Leeloo Johnson and Eric Marshall, that they are a teaching team in our fifteen one. Also, we believe that we have a growth mindset and a quiet leadership style. They are again, just like Allison and Jen, teachers that maybe sometimes quiet under the radar, but we are doing exceptional work every single day. Next up, we have Angela Kling, and she's one of our speech language pathologists, and again, that perpetual enthusiasm, positivity, growth mindset, and as well for that, for that quiet leadership. Doesn't matter what's going on, you would never know if there's anything bothering Angela because she presents herself every day. And she just shows up for it, so I just want to thank her for doing it. Nice picture of that team.
Alright, this is what I thought for you. Think we're frozen.
There we go.
There we go. Alright. So Mrs. Robin Clearwater, she is our head secretary, again, recognized for an exceptional start in a new role and making an impact out of the gate. I don't know if all of you know this, but last year we had to make an impromptu trip to the firehouse during the, during the day. And that was Mrs. Clearwater's third day, third day of work. I said, oh my goodness, she's she did. Thank you, Mrs. Clearwater, for joining. Can't function without Mrs. Clearwater. So now we have some student recognition. And again, quiet leadership, ensuring peers have a safe and inclusive experience at school and during play. I think that's something that really stood out to me this year, especially in this first group of students. These are kids who other kids really look up to. And when they are outside and they are making sure that everybody on the playground has somebody to be with, they are including every student in their group and really making an effort to make sure that things are handled fairly, that games are played fairly. And in the classroom, carrying over that same leadership style, making sure that lessons are running smoothly, that they are being the role models that everybody looks to. So I'd really like to thank first Mr. Richard Smith. Just not no bills and Penny Short. Mr. Jonathan Landy. And Iliana Hopper. And again, just for perseverance, hard work, leadership. I know in Mrs. Schoolmakers class and Mrs. Schwartzman's class, Mrs. Johnson's class, these are kids that our teachers look to to really set the mark and to just be there to be hopeful. Quiet folks, you guys don't draw attention to yourselves, but you really, really stand out in the way that you carry yourselves each and every day. So thank you, Miss Chloe. You want to do that, Mr. President? Every, everybody who was just involved, just the kids, or do you want? Teachers and kids, come on. On weeknight. And thanks for sharing kids with us every day. It's also important that these kids are all third graders, so it's been a real pleasure watching them. For, for, for you on the board, just your quick few of our practice. Social emotional learning is something very important to us. We practice that by really paying attention to student attendance, storing the practice. Teachers lead conference circles at least once a week to make sure everything's going okay with your students. In class, weekly school counseling lessons, lunch by or EBI S program. We're currently working on a school-wide phenomenon today, No Place For Heat, and we just had our first peaceful school festival. We also have very high P E I S expectations, loving, safe, respectful, responsible. This fall, we had our pinmills for peace ceremony, No Place For Heat pledge. Again, peaceful school festival was multi-tiered systems of support and data-driven decision-making. This is something that, you know, I I think is our real strength of ours. Our work with instructional support team, school improvement team, and student response. And all of our different data sources that we use. Our third priority cultural and responsive community standing on educational practices, making sure that every student knows a sense of belonging and that our school is representative of what we believe in. And curriculum instruction as well as universal design for learning, these are really important pieces. What you see in the picture are student crafts where students are setting goals for their learning and charting their progress. We really want students to have agency and ownership over their learning. And again, really working on project-based learning, purposeful play, goal-setting, identifying barriers and overcoming them, efficient use of meeting and planning time, making sure that teachers and students are getting so thank you very much for letting me come and present to you. Thank you board members for coming and visiting our school, and we hope to see more of you coming to visit us in the future.
Ones that got awards, you're free, you want to escape the rest of me by all means, they're more than welcome too, but if you want to sit at this time, we do so, transitions to the next agenda item. Thank you for coming. Alright, next on the agenda is the presentation of our state testing data from our director of state data, Mr. Alex Dan.
Alright, good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming out. Sorry to tell the students that are here, you didn't know that I had a ninety-seven slide presentation coming for you. Try to be out of here within at least an hour. Just going over some of our I was just gonna go over some of our twenty-four case of near state assessment. Tennessee suspension data. I was asked to disaggregate some of the information, so we did that as well. Got a lot of good things to report. Some of the members who are on the curriculum committee saw similar slide in the past. I was asked to add a third year, so now this is a three-year trend report for our ELA results for grades three through eight. So as you'll see, for the most part, pretty much every grade level, we saw increases last year. Third grade at Coniston scored really well two years ago, sixty-three percent. Sixty-three percent. They did have a drop off to fifty-three, but they're still maintaining a pretty high level. And as you can see, they were down at thirty-nine percent two years ago. So all the great things that Ms. Ben Ozda was just talking about is shown there in their improvements. Marble Town, sixty percent proficient. Combined, we went down to fifty-seven percent, but again, it's still pretty, pretty good overall. And then massive increases in fourth grade and sixth grade, a six percent increase in fifth grade. So the intermediate school did a really great job last year with their instruction and also increases in seventh and eighth grade. Every grade level except for, for third grade went up. The third grade has been consistently so disaggregating some of the information. Again, the board members got some more breakdowns, a little more in-depth, but just going over some of the highlights to keep the time moving. Some of the highlights for, for the three through eight ELA data, the multiple racial and ethnic subgroups led their grade levels of proficiency rate, so it wasn't one subgroup leading the way all, all the way through, reflecting strong and equitable academic outcomes across diverse student populations. So that's something that's really great to see. Our male and female proficiency rates in ELA remain relatively balanced, so no big significant widening gender gaps and indicates equitable access to literacy supports and instruction. And then students with low absenteeism demonstrated markedly higher proficiency. Should come as a surprise to most people, being in school is important to make sure that you're getting the information and making sure that you're staying up to date with your class. Some areas that we need to investigate, some we've already had identified, but some we're new. A large performance gap persists between general education students with disability groups, pointing to a need for stronger tier two and three intervention, co-teaching effectiveness, and targeted literacy support. Students with chronic absenteeism scored significantly lower proficiency. Goes with the highlight there. And then lower proficiency rates for economically disadvantaged students suggest opportunity gaps that may relate to access to resources intervention in some of it. So just some areas that we're investigating to make sure we can improve those outcomes for all of our students. Then the cohort trend, there's a lot going on here. You can look at this report in two different ways, right? So the trend report before was looking this way. So eighth grade year over year, here's how the results were. But you're not really comparing apples to apples there. You're comparing apples to oranges because eighth grade students are different every year. So this chart here, when you look this way, looks at the eighth grade students. This was last year's eighth graders. Here's how they did in eighth grade, seventh grade, sixth grade, fifth grade, fourth grade, and third grade. So you can really start to compare apples to apples to see those trends when you look this. So here was our current third, our third graders from last year were at fifty-seven percent. We do see, continue to see a slide from third grade to fourth grade. But overall, you know, the trends were trending up in pretty much every grade level last year. Both when you look just by grade level and by cohort. Really good growth that we've seen the past year. Some tests, some testing glows and grows, increased efficiency rate year over year in five of the sixth grade levels. Year over year increases twenty-two percent in fourth grade, thirty-four percent in sixth grade, and thirteen percent in seventh grade. So some really great growth. Double-digit increases in four, five, four out of the five cohorts highlighted by thirty-one percent in seventh grade. So those seventh graders, they scored thirty, thirty-one percent higher in proficiency than they did in sixth grade. Those same students increased thirty-one percent. Some grows, we did see that decrease at Coniston year over year, and we continue to see that, that third to fourth transition slide. So switching over to math. Again, some really fantastic results. Coniston went from fifty-four percent to sixty-two percent. Marble Town, which has been very consistent, at sixty-one percent over the last two years, jumped all the way to seventy-nine percent. And then overall, for, for all the third graders combined, we were at seventy-two percent. It's even more impressive because that was the first year we've done computer-based testing for our third grade students. There was a lot of anxiety going into that. The teachers did a lot of great work using Datamate, the program that we district purchased to help them practice for state exams. And we saw some great results. So hopefully we'll continue to see that. Obviously, as we build that base at the younger levels, that should translate to increased scores at the higher levels. But we did see increases again all throughout the intermediate school, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade with some really great increases, twenty-six percent increase there in sixth grade. And we did see a little bit of a slide in seventh and eighth. Part of, part of what we're doing to help with that is you've implemented the envisioned math program now in seventh and eighth grade. We've had it for, this is year two now for K through six. This will be year one currently for seventh. We identified, we identified that, and we're working to so getting back into the disaggregated information. Some of the highlights, fifty percent of our third grade students with disabilities scored proficient. So half of our special ed students scored proficient, which is great. Much like we saw in ELA, multiple racial and ethnic subgroups led their grade level and proficiency. And then several subgroups demonstrated steady or improving proficiency rates across multiple grade levels. So we did see some good things there. And then again, some areas to investigate. A large performance gap persists between general ed and special education students. That was the same as in, as in ELA. Students with chronic absenteeism scored significantly lower and pretty common thread there. And lower proficiency rates for economically disadvantaged students. So there are some subgroups that we, we do need to target and work on our ruins. And again, the cohort trends. Again, seventy-two percent third grade, really fantastic. Third to fourth grade slide. Still there, but increases all along the board through all the grade levels until you reach that eighth grade group. But there is the note there that the eighth grade advanced students don't take that test, so thirty-one percent of those students, sorry, thirty-seven percent of those students included all the advanced math students last year. So dropping to thirty-five, when you take out thirty of our highest achieving math students, you are probably going to see a little bit of a decline. Overall, some really great math as well. So increased proficiency rates year over year at the elementary and intermediate levels. Year over year increases eight percent at Coniston, eighteen percent at Marble Town to fourteen percent overall in third grade. Eleven percent in fourth grade, seventeen in fifth grade, and twenty-six percent increase in sixth grade. The fifth grade cohort increased their proficiency rate by twenty-two percent. And while the seventh grade saw a decrease year over year, that cohort increased by seven percent. So that's six to seventh grade group increased seven percent, which is great. Some grows, seventh and eighth grade saw a year-over-year decrease of six and eight percent respectively. And we still continue to see that third to fourth grade. For science, the science tests are offered from the state in fifth and eighth grade. So in fifth grade, we were forty-three, forty-three percent proficient. The state average was forty-five. And for eighth grade, we were forty-six, and the state average is forty-four. And then just comparing from last year to this year, fifth grade went from thirty-five percent proficient to forty-three, so we increased eight percent. And eighth grade went from forty-eight to forty-six, so we went down two percent. The state hasn't released all the county numbers, so we can't, usually there's comparison charts to all the other schools in the county, which I'll get to you as soon as they release it, but we were first in the county last year at forty-eight percent, so even at forty-six percent, we should relatively high. Looking some of our Regents' school, Regents' exam scores. This one includes all exam administrations, so the August exams from last summer, January exams in June. And this is for all the students that are ronned out district students, so even our out-of-district students, so we don't control their educational outcomes. There are other, other placements, they're included in these charts. So the next chart, you'll see there are some differences in some of the numbers, but the next chart is only our students. Algebra one Regents, we were fifty-three percent proficient. Coach Malik asked me to include the number of students tested, so I did add those columns for you, Coach. Algebra two, eighty-six percent. Geometry fifty-three. Do you want me to read them all?
Okay, just give us a, a minute or two to
I'll just go to the next one because really these are the ones that are more important. This is the high school only, so just our students, the ones that we control their educational outcomes. And for the most part, it's just the June administration because we really, really wanted to get a feel of the students who are in the classes. For the most part, there are kids that are making up exams as well. The only caveat to that is we offered the English. The only caveat to that is we offered the English readings in January for the first time this past year, so that is the result from the January exam. So seventy-eight percent of our students who took it in January were proficient compared to seventy-one percent the year before. So we did see some increases, global went up eight percent. I'll touch on some of the other glows when we get to, but I'll let you read that for a minute. Algebra went up ten percent. All right, some glows and grows, hundred percent pass rate for our living environment and algebra, eighth grade students, all of our advanced students all passed the regency exams in both score, in both subjects. Ten percent increase in algebra, eight percent increase in global, eleven percent increase in living environment, and a sixty-six percent increase in physics. Mr. Bealy is doing a fantastic job in our, with our physics students, and it's reflected there. Some of our grows, we did see a decrease in the geometry regents, it was a new assessment offered for the first time, so something we're going to keep an eye on, and then an eight percent decrease in output. E and L news, our E and L students did a fantastic job this past year. On the NICE slide exam, eight out of the twenty-four students scored well enough to test out of the E and L program. Seven scored commanding and one scored expanding along with getting a three in ELA exam. Seven out of our twenty-four E and L students are no longer in the E and L program. All the great work that our E and L teachers have done. All right, so now getting into some of the absenteeism numbers, looking at chronic absenteeism over the last three years, just some different trends to note here. So you can see, we did see a little bit of an increase in chronic absenteeism overall as a district. Stayed relatively flat in most of the buildings, some, some minor increases in some others. For anybody who doesn't know, chronic absenteeism is anytime a student is absent more than ten percent of enrolled days. So students here, the entire school district, if they're absent more than eighteen days, they're considered chronically absent. But if students only have a part of the year, it's only ten percent of those days, so you can be absent less than ten days, so less than eighteen days, still be considered chronically absent. And we did disaggregate some of this information as well. Some notices and wonderings, notices, our homeless students are by far most impacted by chronic absenteeism, it's sixty-five percent. Sixty-five percent of our homeless students were chronically absent, which is understandable for a lot of reasons, but it's something that we need to work on. In our, ELL students attend school at a higher rate than their peers with only thirteen percent chronically absent. And in grades nine through twelve, Hispanic students were forty percent students with disability. English language learners, E and L and ELL are. So in grades nine through twelve, Hispanic students were forty percent, students with disabilities forty-six percent, economically disadvantaged students forty-six percent. Are chronically absent more often than the average. Some wonderings, just based on the information that we had, here's some things we're going to look at. Which interventions are in place, home visits, mentoring, transportation support, stuff like that? What's the estimated instructional time lost and its potential impact on achievement metrics? Are there spikes around holidays, weather days, testing windows, or schedule changes? Are particular days of the week driving a higher rate, are they higher on Mondays or Fridays? And which subgroups are the largest, show the largest gaps, and are those gaps widening or narrowing? And getting to the end here, some suspension information, so again, it's broken down by the district and then all the buildings. Our enrollment did drop a little bit, our number of students with ISS is here, so that did go up from last year, along with the number of days. Overall, as a district, we did see some decreases in some of the buildings. So with the high school, we saw a decrease in the number of ISS students and the number of, sorry, the number of ISS students and the number of ISS days went down. And then some disaggregated information, so E and L, ELL students have exceptionally higher OSS rates, far above the overall average, that's something that we noticed. Black students have a markedly higher OSS rate than the school average, even though average OSS days per suspension student, suspended student are relatively low. So they're being suspended more often, but for less, fewer number of days per incident. Homeless students exhibit elevated ISS and OSS rates indicating both frequency and vulnerability. Economically disadvantaged students have substantially higher OSS rates than their non-disadvantaged peers. Students with disabilities have higher, much higher suspension rates than general, general education students. And then just two things to note, total instructional days lost for the economically disadvantaged students was three hundred and ninety total days lost, and students with disabilities was two hundred and three. So then some wonderings, are certain infractions or codes driving the higher OSS rates for L students, black students and homeless students? Are these subjective offenses, defiance or versus objective like fighting? Do timing patterns exist, are spikes clustered around certain times, certain periods, transitions, lunch periods, dismissal, arrival, after breaks, things like that? Are students receiving tier two and tier three supports before OSS, and are interventions documented and implemented with fidelity? How do repeat suspensions vary by subgroup? Are a small number of students driving a large share of OSS days? Are there disparities in consequences for similar infractions by subgroup, different responses to the same code or infraction? And what are the attendance and achievement impacts for subgroups with higher days lost? Is there a measurable link between course failure and chronic absenteeism? A lot of things to look at, pretty much that. Not ninety-seven slides.
Thank you. This took a lot of work and we really appreciate. Conversation is a curriculum, we discussed it really in depth. We really appreciate it and the information, I really like the, the lows and growths that helps us kind of make meaning of the data, so I appreciate your efforts. Also, we, we improved a lot, so.
There was a lot of growth.
Yeah, a lot of growth.
Lot better than how I could have done.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is the superintendent's goals, so at the last board meeting, the board created their goals, and then from those goals, superintendent's goals would be created. So the board goal was, first one is strategic planning and vision alignment. The board goal was to review and approve a three- to five-year strategic plan that aligns to the portrait of the graduate. Superintendent's goal is to lead the development, communication, implementation of a three- to five-year strategic plan that infuses the district's portrait of a graduate and most of our values. Key actions, and then we're going to get a facilitator, facilitate stakeholder engagement sessions, get feedback from our stakeholders, student staff, parents, and community members. We're going to develop measurable indicators, align student outcomes, organizational effectiveness. We're going to present draft and final plan to the Board of Education by June of twenty-sixth for approval for a strategic plan. Second goal is academic excellence and instructional leadership. The board goal is to continue on the pathway of being the world premier school district by promoting academic excellence. Excellence, the superintendent's goal is to ensure consistent, high-quality instructional practice that drives academic growth and excellence across all grade levels. Again, our new reality is forty-six percent of our students are meeting proficiency on twenty-five ELA state assessment, it's a thirteen percent increase from last year. And our new goal this year moving forward is fifty-one percent of our students in grades three through eight will meet proficiency on the twenty-six ELA state assessment. On math, our new reality is forty-eight percent of our students who grades three through eight are meeting proficiency according to twenty-five math state assessment, that's an eleven percent increase from last year. Our new goal moving forward is fifty-three percent of our students in grades three through eight will meet proficiency on the twenty-six math state assessment. How are we going to get there? You know, we oversee full implementation of our district-wide math and ELA curriculum, including writing with fidelity. We're going to monitor student performance trends to get it from grades K through twelve. We're going to expand UDL, PE across all schools and integrate it into classroom walkthroughs and coaching cycles. And then we're going to integrate project-based learning, PBL, to promote deep learning, student engagement that's aligned with the New York State Inspires. Our next goal is school culture, climate, and belonging. The board goal is to ensure a positive school culture and sense of belonging for everyone in our school community. Superintendent's goal is to foster an inclusive, respectful, and supportive school environment that prioritizes student well-being and belonging. How are we going to get there? We're going to research and select a systemic K through twelve, SCL curriculum across all buildings. We're going to analyze and respond to disaggregated climate survey data to identify strengths and areas for improvement. And we're going to strengthen the school's strategic goals and more starting initiatives to promote respect and trust. Next board goal was fiscal responsibility and transparency. Board goal is to maintain sound fiscal stewardship, stewardship, consistent with board policies. Superintendent's goal is to ensure transparent data and more financial management practices that balance fiscal responsibility, program excellence. Key actions, we're going to facilitate public budget workshops, ensure transparency with budget communications. We're going to conduct stakeholder budget feedback surveys, integrate findings into final recommendations, and we're going to maintain a tax levy added below the state cap without reducing core instruction services. Fifth board goal was safety, security, and capital project execution. Board goals ensure that all school buildings and grounds are safe and secure. Superintendent's goal is to implement the Code of Conduct with Fidelity, including our new cellphone, you know, our new cellphone policy. We're going to lead implementation of the district-wide safety plan, including any training drills, prevention programs. We're going to oversee the capital project design and execution, for example, with our ED bus storage, our new wake-up vocal room. And we're going to use safety and incident data to inform continuous improvement and communication with all stakeholders. And then the last board goal had to do with policy alignment, governance, governments. We're going to align the policy and practices with state federal laws and the strategic plans, the board goal. Superintendent's goal is to ensure that district policies and admin procedures are current, compliant, aligned with the strategic plan. Key actions to carry this out, reporting ongoing policy review cycle with the board's policy committee. We're going to ensure all updated policies are reflective of district practice, staff communication, and all policies are being updated for NICE and federal governments. And questions about the superintendent's goals, is that one a reflection of board goals for twenty-five, twenty-six?
I think they look great, impressive, I'm really, really happy with our progress that we've made from one year to the next after your first year in leadership, so thank you. And I think these goals reflect what the board is, you know, where the board and our communities will go, so thank you.
Again, heckling, Nicole, thank you so much for that, and we will review those. Thank you so much.
Public comment. As a reminder, if you have public comment, please keep your comments to a three-minute time limit. Yours, there you go. Please refrain from mentioning any, any individuals personally or anything that could be identifiable of any students or faculty or staff. And all speakers and observers, please conduct yourselves. With that being said, do any.
So I just want to pass this out so everybody can follow along with what. So we'll try and keep it to three minutes, this is a relation to what's going on in BOSI's right now. I'm not sure if the board is aware, BOSI's is under extensive construction, they moved through a new building this year. I park eighty-seven, my granddaughter attends BOSI's, as does several of her friends. My, my granddaughter's mother, my ex-daughter-in-law, sent an email to the director of BOSI's to bring forward some concerns regarding construction that's going on in the building and some things that are still going on in the building. She sent that email to Joe Salamon, who was the director there, on September thirtieth, followed it up with an email copying Dr. Spadaro the next day. Just saying, hey, didn't know if you were aware, I know it's not Rondau's blame, but didn't know if you were aware. She didn't hear no, no response from either of those emails. Joe Salamon did contact my son at work one time, and my son said, hey, you know, my ex is the one that sent this email, she's the one that drafted it. She would appreciate a response in writing, communicate with her, her and I are on the same page, but communicate with her. She never heard nothing, and my son heard nothing else after that. So on October the ninth, a week and a half after sending the initial emails, she emails the BOSI superintendent, who almost immediately, within twenty minutes, gets back to her. You know, with her concerns, and he says, hey, you know, give me a phone number. She says, no, I sent my email, I want a written response, especially now because she's a little upset not getting any response for so long. He indicated that he was going to CC Joe, Joe Solomon, even though she's, that's who she sent the email to in the first place. And then you'll see, as you get a little further in, finally on October the tenth, just a little, not finally, but the next day, it was, it was a pretty quick response from the superintendent. He responded to her concerns, and you'll see his response outlined in in that email to her. Again, given three minutes, I'm not going to give you, you know, give you the chance to get through it, but she, you know, she raised several concerns of things that are going on in BOSI's, and that was his response. And, you know, in relation to his response, I'm going to stop short of calling him a liar. But I will say, many of the assertions are not remotely accurate from what he is indicating in his email, saying that there's no construction and no painting going on when the kids are there. That's not true, there is active construction and active painting, not touch-up, but full painting, full walls going on while those kids are still in that, in that class, in that building. You know, he indicates that Solomon contacted my son several times and contacted her with several messages, no, it was, it was, it was one phone call. And my son advised him, you know, answer my ex, she's the one that sent the email. The building's not ready, the building is not ready to hold class there. There's air quality concerns, you have, you know, grown men routing a floor while, while in the, the girls' bathroom, while there's girls in there, not even announcing themselves. Which, you know, superintendent for BOSI's indicates that's not acceptable. But how they got their CO, I don't know. Really don't know. There's, there's doors that aren't even on classrooms, there's classrooms that they're calling classrooms that aren't even classrooms, they're just big open rooms with no doors, no anything. And again, it's not Rondau's fault, but I didn't, you know, nobody knew if Rondau Board and Superintendent was aware. But our kids are going, you know, our kids are going there in an environment that none of their supplies are in their classrooms despite the superintendent for BOSI saying that they are and, and they are as needed, they're not. And if you, you know, you go, go on to the, to the final page, you know, these are some of the things that my granddaughter herself assess are still going on. Fire alarms are going off due to construction. Her classroom doesn't have windows, which I don't know if that's a requirement or not, they do have egress doors or no doors, I guess it's just open. The lights in the classroom don't turn off, the double doors in the classroom will not and do not lock in the event of a lockdown. Unfortunately, something that we have to be concerned with is lockdown situations. There's another classroom, it's just an open space, and when they had a lockdown drill there, they had to send kids to another room to do the lockdown. That room that they sent them to don't even have doors, so I don't know how they're doing a lockdown in a, in a classroom with no doors. The bathroom's flooded on multiple occasions. You know, there's a, there's a counselor, I won't mention the name, it's in, it's in the print here, that, you know, questioned my granddaughter and her friend. You know, say, hey, how, how's BOSI's going? They told him everything that's going on, particularly with dude routing the floor while she's in the bathroom and, you know, and, and a lot of these workers don't speak English. Not that that has anything to do with any of this, but that was just an aside that she had mentioned to the counselor, and his response dismissing her was, well, how could they announce when they don't speak English? well, how could they announce when they don't speak English? How are they going to announce that they're coming in? Okay, um, it's, it's not acceptable. It's not an acceptable environment. The superintendent's response, uh, to, um, my, my daughter-in-law, my ex-daughter-in-law, um, is false. And I think you should check with the kids that are going to BOSI's and find out what's really going on there because this guy isn't telling the full story. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Margo Sanchez. I live in Marble Town. I have a ninth grader in my high school this year. I want to talk tonight about the impact of expanded ICE activity on our community. Though ICE has existed since two thousand and two, the latest federal budget increases its funding by a hundred and seventy billion dollars for enforcement detention and deportation. The Supreme Court has recently authorized ICE to target people based on appearance, language and employment, essentially authorizing racial profiling of Latinx people and others. Individuals of all citizenship statuses are being taken from street corners, bus stops, vehicles, graduations, job sites, apartment buildings and warehouses in big cities and in small towns. This is not business as usual. I understand and very much appreciate that all New York school districts are already required to protect students' student information from ICE. And the districts don't collect information about students or family citizenship status in the first place. In this moment, I would like to ask the district leaders to go further than this to address students and families' fears and needs related to ICE. And to ensure concerned community members have the resources they need to respond. The most recent New York State Education Department data says students who identify as Hispanic or Latino make up nine percent of our district population. That is a lot of families whose right to due process at the very least is at risk right now. As I mentioned, my last name is Sanchez. I took this name from my husband, who's of Puerto Rican descent. As you probably know, Puerto Rico is part of the United States, though this fact isn't even relevant to his citizenship, citizenship, as he was born in New York. This hasn't stopped him from feeling like he needs to carry his ID to walk down our driveway to the mailbox. The other day, he pointed out that my son, who's fourteen and sometimes spends time in Kingston with his friends, some of whom also have brown skin, is a Hispanic person who couldn't prove his citizenship if he were to be stopped. Should I be sending him out with a copy of his birth certificate? I hope these fears are unnecessary, but I know they are not unfounded. No ICE is in Auster County, and I know it's always better to be prepared. I've been following along as the Kingston City School District expands their training and response to ICE. And I hope Rondau is also seeking to connect to new resources, many of which are available for free from organizations like Auster Immigrant Defense Network. I also hope the district will continue to seek ways to connect families to resources and equally important to show their care for those who feel threatened by the possibility of detainment and family separation. Thank you. I'm sorry to be bringing this heavy topic to this room tonight, but I appreciate your attention.
So I'm in an electrical class at BOSI's and the ventilation system is actually from when they were painting. What it does is it sucks it all up and with how they were operating it, it still contains all of the painting stuff in it. So like, it puts it out to all the class. So they're still breathing this chemicals, all that nasty stuff in. And the classroom isn't connected to every classroom in the building. So therefore I can hear anybody's conversation throughout the entire bus. The walls are all combined together. The room isn't connected to the classrooms. Sorry, I can't speak. Classrooms can like, they're all one blob. So the teachers are talking. We can't hear the teachers. We can't learn. We have no tools. My classroom has zero tools. We are getting Snap-on sponsorships. So Snap-on is coming in as they can, but they don't have all the money in the world to give us. So it's hard for us to go on with what we have. So we are doing OSHA. And they're giving us our OSHA so we can proceed with learning, but as who I am, I do all my work. So I like to get ahead of the OSHA stuff so I can have my stuff for my future. So I have all of my OSHA parts that I could possibly have and offered to me that I already took and completed every course. So I have nothing to do. So I go to BOSI's and I sit there for two hours in an electrical class, all open. It smells like fume with a headache all day and have a hard time hearing each other because everybody's screaming in this building and it's just nothing but loud noises combined together. So it's just like a really bad spot where all these kids are getting put together and they're starting their own activities on their free time. So I could tell you as a student, I can see other students leaving their classes and leaving the building and going to explore the broken building that's attached to BOSI's that has no roof on it at all. And there's videos posted in the area of people exploring while school was going on because of how much construction we are under. So there's not enough eyes to watch the students in the area of where they're going. There's no cameras. I just had a situation where a kid threatened to stab me or stab somebody because they got shown that they couldn't be somebody up. And so they threatened to stab somebody and pulled out a box cutter that was in the classroom. And when I brought it to the board of directors at their school, brought it to their attention, nobody had any cameras to get the proof. And this kid was associated with a fake gang in Kingston, supposedly. So therefore there was no student to stand up for whoever saw it because there's no cameras at all and everybody's scared of this one kid. So many things are happening without anybody knowing that is seriously wrong. And nobody's ever going to be able to tell. There's no formal communication and no cameras. So it's like really unfair. That's all I have to say.
Uh, next thing agenda, consent agenda's recommend motion that the board event approve the consent agenda's items.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Just before we move on, can we look into what's happening at BOSI's and follow up with, um, those who spoke tonight to let them know what we're doing in order to help support our students through our intensive process?
And maybe like the superintendent's response is true? Because it's not.
Like to take a visit?
Yeah.
Is it ever possible for us to do a walkthrough and/or for you to do a walkthrough of BOSI's?
I mean, I, I've done it.
You've done it before.
We did it. We did it before there were no students present.
Got it.
When we did it. It was right before the start.
Okay.
Um, we were invited as the superintendent, the store representative. There were no, there were no students. So at that time. They were under construction, a lot of processes of twenty-four hour shifts, ten days a day.
So is that something we could maybe try to schedule at some point in the next couple of weeks or something?
Yeah, I'll reach out to Dr. Shanker.
Yeah.
Best concerns that were brought forth.
I appreciate it.
Next any agenda is, uh, consent agenda items one through nine, recommend motion that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items one through nine as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed. Uh, for, uh, an update on next week, uh, as board members, um, myself and Carrie Casson will be attending the NISBA convention. So that's the annual, uh, convention for your school boards association. And we will be there alongside, um, Shnegrin and Dr. Spadaro, uh, down, um, in New York City. It's a, it's, we get to learn a lot, bring back a lot of information for the rest of our board, um, and ideas. So we're looking to do that. Board time, Mr. Bogart, if I may start with you, please?
Sure. Um, so we had a facilities committee meeting last week. Self and Dean attended along with the rest of the committee. Um, they were just talking about some, some of the leftover monies from the previous capital project and what we can do with that money. And then, um, with the current capital project that we voted on last year, we were looking at some design work for the, entrance to the music wing, which is pretty impressive. It would be pretty awesome when that's done and some of the other stuff going on.
Well, you saw, you had the presentation of our curriculum. And, uh, congratulations. The programs are really soaring. Kids are doing very well. And to the walk-throughs, the, the elementary, we've only done two elementary. It's, it's amazing. The engagement, the excitement, um, by those staff and it's, it, we're really, those gators are so.
I also got to go on Marble Town entry school walkthrough, which I couldn't carry. All of you as well. It was great. Lots of happy kids. It was picture day. So it was a little bit, you know, not a normal day. Lots of happy kids, great teachers. It was really nice to be there. Um, Nicole will talk more about the curriculum committee, but we saw very detailed disaggregated data, which was really helpful in understanding what our, what story the data is telling us in our districts. I really appreciated that. And then Carrie and I also attended the board, the new board member meeting in September. So we had two full days of board member policy, this was our board meeting, financial oversight, budget, and jam packed two days. Great to be there and personally be able to network and just get to know other board members in the state of New York. And have a little slide drive. Um, so just everyone touched upon it, the curriculum, the curriculum committee meeting. We reviewed FAS bridge data in addition to our state testing. So, uh, our FAS bridge data is our internal, um, assessment that it's not the right word. It's what?
Screen.
It's a screener to see how our kids are doing. Thank you. Um, and overall we saw an increase in those scores as well. Um, and ultimately fewer students are needing AIS or academic intervention. Um, and so we're really excited to see the AIS numbers declining and to see that our tier one core instruction, the new programs that we're rolling out seem to be, um, having a positive impact. So we're really excited to see that. We also talked briefly about our PD, um, summer work and our professional development plan. So, uh, Mrs. Harden is reviewing the professional development plan and they have a committee that's going to come together, we'll discuss that and make some tweaks and that will come to the board for approval, um, in the soon. When is that coming? It's next?
New Year.
After the new year. Yeah, in the spring. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah. So did the walkthroughs at Marble Town and Curhanson, um, like was mentioned, and I really appreciate, really appreciate the opportunity to do that. It is so helpful to see. You know, we, we, we talk a lot. We look at a lot of data, but to really see, um, students engaged with faculty and staff and to see the communities, to see the art on the walls, like all of those things is just so, so really helpful. Um, and I look forward to, to seeing the intermediate school and the high school, um, Equity Council. So we will have, I think, our, our first sort of official meeting on October thirtieth. Um, so that'll be happening soon. We also did have a policy committee meeting, but I'll let.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I know. Um, and I do really appreciate a parent coming and, um, sharing about, um, about ICE and how it might be affecting some folks in our community. Um, definitely something for us to sort of think.
Uh, so as the policy committee chairperson, uh, we'll be having a first reading and adoption tonight, uh, regarding public comment at board meetings. And basically, uh, there was an incorrect, uh, email address that was listed for public comment and it is now addressed, uh, in the new policy. Uh, so complaints from the public are addressed in board policy number one, four, one, zero. So we'll be looking to just adopt, uh, that and, uh, striking, uh, off the incorrect, uh, email address. Right? So that's adoption number one. Uh, the second one is a declassification of students with disabilities. I believe, and, and Maggie can also help me with this, but, uh, we, uh, were, uh, informed that, uh, New York State has adopted or is in the process of adopting, uh, students who may maintain, uh, eligibility to stay in the public school system until the age of twenty-two or until they receive a regular high school diploma. Uh, I believe that, uh, it says in here, the student will be graduating with an IEP diploma. This prior written notice was indicate that the student continues to be eligible for free, appropriate public education until the end of the school year in which a student turns twenty-two or until receipt of a regular high school diploma. Anything else you would like to add to that?
Yes, specific to the, on the declassification portion of the policy, specific to the eligibility age. It's just changing to twenty-one, twenty-two.
Right. And that's coming down from the state. Okay. So that's that. And, uh, the third adoption, uh, that we're looking for tonight for, for support, uh, is the online distance and remote learning. And basically, uh, we striking, uh, in this old policy, uh, it says the district may take steps to increase technological capacity during the emergency school closures, such as providing computing devices and temporary internet access. And I believe all the students do have the, uh, techno- technological access to computers. Uh, so, uh, we're striking that out of there because we know that they all maintain that ability. Is that correct?
Yeah, that says that my, before COVID, we issued a Christmas, where we had a hundred and something MiFi's that we let out, which is a cost of the district. So this, I mean, we're going to have a small amount of MiFi's for internet access, but you know, it's a cost of the district. So we minimize those.
Right. So we're, we're reducing the amount of, uh, yeah. And that's that. And then the last one, which is, uh, will just be the first reading tonight, but the budget, uh, internal budget auditor talked about, uh, wire transfers that we don't have included in the policy. So we're in the process of getting additional information from the state, uh, with regards to wire transfers, uh, that our, uh, accountant can take care of. And is there anything that you wanted to add in regards to that?
Oh, this one.
So and those are the policies that will be, the wire transfer one will just be the first reading tonight. Uh, you should have received some information, uh, regarding that. If you haven't, we will provide that to you. And that's it for myself.
As of right now, the only things I really have to share is that the homecoming dance will be on October twenty-fifth, seven thirty.
I think it's seven thirty to nine.
Seven thirty to nine. And the other thing is that me, Madison and Miss Torak were collaborating on when we, it would be best for us to get into the middle and elementary schools. We're currently working on, uh, with our schedules to figure out what time would be best for all of us.
Um, next week's a big week. We have Spirit Week Wednesday, the twenty-second. We have College Night. That's going to be big. And then we have the Homecoming Food Truck Festival, the twenty-fourth Friday next week. Big night.
Um, I'll just touch upon a couple of things. Paul, for facilities committee, um, so we just, just vote on the first contracts for the, uh, twenty-twenty-five capital project, which is one A, has to do with our sound system, our lockdown system, box that are getting replaced, uh, backing up though from the two thousand and nineteen capital. We did have some extra money and extra funds in that. So we are, uh, redoing all the controls at the high school, uh, so we can actually control the heat and air conditioning over in that building. That should be done, completed at the end of November. And then, uh, the second part of the twenty-twenty-five capital one B is going out to bid, uh, in another week or so, uh, which includes. Uh which includes the uh secure vestibules, the weight room, uh and a few other things. Fids will be back on the eighteenth of November. Uh next meeting is December third. All are welcome.
I want to once again uh welcome Madison and Zachary. So the table here is our, is our students uh board members, so welcome. Thank you for sharing. Um and I'm so glad to hear that you're gonna be trying to go to some of the other buildings too, I think that's that's always great for you to be able to share some of that information of what's happening.
Um just one other thing I want to touch on is, I probably didn't do it during my time. Um October is fire prevention month. And um Ronan has always been a big supporter of the volunteer fire departments in our district, coming into our elementary schools and teaching fire prevention. Um I know my fire department, which covered Marble Town School, was there on October third doing fire prevention. Tragically, this past week, we did have a fire in the district that affected some of our students, and I think it's really important that we um as adults, as students, we, we take this stuff seriously. Um the outcome of that fire I was at could have been a lot worse, so fire prevention is huge. Um you know, the stuff that we, we teach to these young kids um is very important and could save lives.
And I just follow, which is the policy, the next policy committee meeting will be on the twentieth of October at four P M.
Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the Board of Education for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve consent agenda items four through seven as presented.
Like the motion?
Any discussion? All those in favor? And we had our first, as Jim stated to us, our first reading policy uh for the wire transfers and electronic transfer. Any discussion or questions?
So again, just wanted to reiterate that that's coming down from the internal auditor, okay, and that's something that we have not had as a policy. And they would like us to uh safeguard ourselves, you know, when we are transferring monies, that it's protected.
Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve warrant number four and warrant number five as presented. All those in favor? Motion carries. Recommended motion to adjourn the October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five meeting as presented.
I'll make the motions.
Any discussion? All those in favor? A wonderful night.